It's eight thirty, I'll call this morning's meeting to order. I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
Who do approve?
We have a motion to approve.
A second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Citizens to be heard, are there any citizens that we wish to speak on anything? Not on the agenda, Mr. Burnett? Come on up.
Hi everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is there a new issue you wish to talk about today?
Well, just the who's taking care of the these violations that were...
Which which letter are you referencing?
Well, dated September twenty eighth, violations of shore land zoning regulations on Lake Fifteen.
Okay. Alright, well, I have a letter from the watershed that identifies those concerns that you had. And so their recommendations are in here. The planning and zoning office have sent those out, but some of those issues that you're talking about can't be determined whether there's compliance or not until the snow's gone. Some of it has to do with planting, correct?
Well, it's all soil erosion.
Right.
I mean, steep slopes.
Right.
The only way that can be fixed, you're flooding out three other properties from this, what was not designed, it's too steep, it's a danger.
Right.
I talked to Bruce Albright on last Friday, he said he has nothing to do with shoreland management, that's Tim Magnuson, and they will not do nothing with it.
Right, and what I'm saying is, we have addressed those concerns, but that's not something that we can see if there's compliance or not in the middle of the winter, that's something that needs to be taken care of once the the snow and the frost is gone, and then we can make sure that it's being planted, or or the erosion is not a problem.
Well, it needs to be put back, I mean, we've been fighting this, I mean, you've said it, this letter is dated from October thirty first, two thousand seventeen, these violations, if they're not taken care of, there will be penalties to the people...
I I completely agree with you, and that that course is in process, but we can't address it, it's not fair to have, give someone something in the fall and expect them to do it in the middle of winter. And if they were to address it, it would not be done correctly, and I think we'd then have a lingering problem. Can we agree on that?
Well, we can give it another year, I guess, but...
I'm just saying that we need to give people a fair opportunity to address the concerns.
Will we be involved with these concerns?
I think you've been...
As a neighborhood, because of the danger?
I think you've been amply involved with the concerns.
Pardon me?
I think you've definitely been involved with the concerns.
Well, I brought them all up, I guess, 'cause, you know, I've worked these laws for half of my working life, and then to be told that they don't apply to us, 'cause we're outside the urban area.
Mr. Burnett, I just told you that those regulations are applying to your area, and we are in the process of of making sure it comes up to compliance. At some point, it's, it has to be about what's, what the fix is, not so much about a vendetta against a neighbor.
This is not vendetta, this is a slope going up, it's about thirty-five percent grade, and it's a hundred feet, a hundred and forty feet up. These people will not stop coming down in the winter. And they built, I called and called, they built on false ground with their pavement, their concrete slabs, on a slope that's probably fifty degrees. That whole thing is gonna go.
So I have the recommendation from the engineers, which you had wanted last week, that an engineer look at it, in the document that they sent the players, their recommendation to the county to enforce was that a number five and six, the driveway should be sloped with a water and riprap chute constructed along the south edge, the recommendations on that, and that it should be well vegetated from, to keep it from eroding. Those are things that cannot be done in the middle of the winter, we're making sure that those would be addressed. And then on top of that, there has to be a culvert put in by the township, I think two culverts maybe, and I'm not gonna argue with it, I'm just saying the township has identified that that's something that could eliminate the eroding, and so that will happen this spring as well.
That will not happen, you cannot send water to other people's property, that's called an easement.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, ma'am, sure. Brian, I, you've come here now for the last four or five weeks asking for information and and wanting additional information from our staff, and you're you're trying to educate us as commissioners on your issue there. I I have difficulty with you coming here during the public comment period repeatedly. I think if you wanna have a discussion on this, you should get put on our agenda and request the information ahead of time, so that all of us as commissioners can can see, none of us have seen one of these documents that we're referencing today. Not one of us have seen it. Now, if you would, if you would get, if you would go through the process of be on the agenda, so that we know what you're looking for, and what staff you want here on that given day to answer questions, we can do that. But we're, we shoot by the hip here, is what we're doing, and I don't like doing that.
Well, I mean, I brought up issues, and I come back and ask about them, and...
But I, but I, you know, don't get me wrong, we 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 wanna give you the time to be heard, but rather than be during this citizens to be heard period, which is, it's meant more for an occasional...
Okay.
...issue, because you have a repeated issue going on here that you're not satisfied with, it should be an agenda item.
Okay.
That we could, you know, because then, so, for example, if we end up spending fifteen or twenty minutes with you on on an issue like this, every other person who got on the agenda and followed the the process, so that they could have a time to plan on being here, everybody gets pushed back on an issue like this.
I just, I get, don't understand, this is the first time that's been brought up to me.
Well, I, I guess because I keep seeing you here, that that's why I bring it up.
Well, I just can't go away on that.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting you go away.
There's dangers, I mean, it's the dig out, I mean, this, I went and talked to the Minnesota Police Control, Nathan, yesterday, brought him this, because this is not a compliance recorded on this sewer system that's seeping into the, or drinking water. This is, this is not a compliance recorded septic system approval. There's so many steps involved, they gotta drill down to see if that system's leaking, which it is, it was put in nineteen eighty-three, everything from ninety-six back has to go through, especially in shoreland management, a rigorous test to make sure it's not leaking into the groundwater.
Well, Brian, you know, don't get me wrong, right?
I'm trying to protect our neighborhood.
And that's, and that's why...
I've been there a long time, and the destruction to the nature out there is, there was no law.
But if I, if I could just ask you, if you're, if you wanna come to a board meeting, just, just call, call Colleen here, Administration, and say you wanna be on the agenda, but then you need to, you need to give us some sort of indication of what you're looking for, so that we can be prepared for you.
Okay.
But I hate shooting from the hip like this, when we don't know what you're looking for.
Well, it's all been brought up for three years, I guess, but...
But you bring up something different every time.
I'll call Colleen and set something up with the agenda, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Burnett. Any other citizens to be heard? If not, I do wanna go back up and do a formal thank you, Clarice Schmidt has served on that Red River Valley Development Association Board of Directors, and we did approve that, but I just wanna extend our sincere gratitude to her for serving in that capacity, that's a really important role. Moving into the approval of payments, bills, and vouchers. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Approval of the February twenty-seven, or twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen minutes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Moving into our number, our eight thirty-five item, request approval of operational supplies. Good morning, Justin.
Good morning.
Morning, Julie.
Good morning.
Well, Justin got presented today the FFNE for the new correctional facility, Justin's put in a lot of work on this, this has been his project, and so I'm gonna let him take over, and if you have any questions, please just ask.
So as part of the construction for the new correctional facility, there's a lot of different components we have to purchase that weren't a part of the scope of construction, but there was a a budgeted one percent as part of the construction, and I believe you all should have the document in front of you, at the bottom I included the FFNE budget, what I included was two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and, it's like eighty-one and ninety-four cents, that was actually an error, it's two hundred and ninety-five thousand, forty-one dollars and fifteen cents, so it was over by just around three thousand, thirty-five hundred.
That's a good, good way to go with that.
So I just wanted to correct that, but I met with Brian last week, and I have compiled quotes from all of our kind of vendors that we've had, had identified items we needed to purchase, and rather than presenting them as vendors, Brian recommended that I break them out into these individual kind of categories, you know, the first being on your list was mattresses, you can identify, you know, it's just over twelve thousand dollars to purchase new mattresses for the facility. Next line item is linens, clothing and bedding, so it would include the whole inmate uniforms, their bed sheets, towels, blankets. We're eliminating some items that we currently use, we currently buy pillows, we've now purchased the mat, or we haven't purchased them, but the mattresses we're recommending have a built-in pillow into them, and so we're eliminating the purchasing requirements for a pillow and pillowcases, so that'll save us some money there. For all the linens and everything we need, it's, it's around sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Then we have some biohazard supplies, which is pretty minimal, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. Then we have some detention and safety equipment, this includes restraint chairs, or restraint chair, we have one that we'll take with us, we have some parts on it that we need to to replace on it, just 'cause they're worn out, but then this also includes purchasing of a new one. There's some other detention equipment, like handcuffs and stuff like that, that we need to purchase. Then we move into the janitorial supplies and cleaning supplies, these are not supplies that Georgia would normally cover under her budget, these are the inmate use janitorial supplies, we've already worked with Georgia, and Georgia, we've identified the areas that she'll be cleaning and, or having her staff clean, and she's, I believe, has it into her budget. But these are specialty items, we have to have specialty mop buckets and stuff like that, that don't contain metal pieces in them, that we need to purchase more of them, just because we have more areas, inmate areas that need to be cleaned, so there's, it's a little over eleven thousand dollars. There's a lot of shelving and carts throughout the facility, that wasn't, some of the areas were included in the construction cost, but the vast majority of them were not, that totals just, just over twenty thousand dollars. There's some rugs there for entry, entry locations, six hundred and fifty-three dollars. We have some receiving equipment, like a pallet jack, you know, a dolly and stuff, there'll be a receiving area as part of the new correctional facility, that's four hundred and thirty-four dollars. And then the next line item is, is office furniture, which I believe the boards already approved, it was bid out with the LEC and the jail. We had originally budgeted for sixty-five thousand dollars with that, it sounds like that's gonna come in more, around fifty-four thousand dollars, so quite a bit cheaper. Then we move into electronics, just over ten thousand dollars in electronics, that includes televisions throughout the the facility in the inmate use areas, as well as like our conference room, our training room, those kind of areas. It also includes some DVD players for the inmate use areas. And then computers, phones, and printers, we've identified, based on the number of posts we're gonna have, the number of offices we have, we've worked with Tim Dent in identifying the number of computers, phones, and printers that we need, along with monitors for those computers. We've identified equipment that we currently have, that we can take over with us, Tim's actually in the process of having his staff replace some of our computers that were due to be upgraded already anyways, I mean, in fact, I think they were probably, some of them were due to be upgraded last year or the year before, we kinda held off on upgrading them, just so we had newer equipment when moving into this facility. And so the the forty-two thousand dollars for the computer phones and printers is in addition to the the equipment we already have.
I just wanna talk about that quick, I, I just wanna make clear that any incurred costs from, from Tim's department that is covered in this as well, and you're saying that you've worked well with, with that?
Tim has it in his...
His replacement costs?
Yeah, his replacement costs that he includes into his annual budget.
So that's, that's something that we'll have to make note of, that when he comes with his budget, those are incurred costs because of this project.
So you're saying it's internal service?
It's internal service, yes, yes, that's where, yes, sorry.
That's alright, I just...
Follow up on that, so, so now, this, this forty-two thousand, this is new stuff that, that's...
New and retrofitted.
Additional, or is it, is it still replacing some?
No, this is new and addition.
New and addition, that, so that brings me to the point, then, as you go to future budgets, then, that's going to change, you're gonna have to also then plan for additional internal service funds annually to go in for replacing these.
For the computers, yeah, either we would or Tim would.
Okay, well, you got, we gotta make sure, one or that you...
He has been...
Make sure the right hand knows what the left hand's doing, so...
Yeah, the list of everything we need here, so he's fully aware of all the computer equipment we have, so, but yeah, you're right, we need to make sure that he...
Yeah, just one of the two of you have to have the, you know...
Covered someplace.
Typically, I'm assuming computers are what, three years maybe, life on them?
We get a little under...
Majority of our computers we've had for probably over five years.
Five years?
Yeah.
Five, so five years, so you're...
I know I've been in my position, going for five years, and I've never had my computer replaced.
So there you're looking at an eight thousand dollar annual expense right there, just, just to start your internal service fund. Alright, thank you.
The, the next line item i- is control room consoles, there's actually two of these for a total of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty cents. This is addition to the, the office furniture, these are, lack of something to reference to, similar to like a dispatch console, there's a lot of computer equipment that's on them, there's three computer towers, there's, it's either seven or eight computer monitors that are all attached to them, they operate our jail records management system, our door controls, as well as our security cameras throughout the facility. Being that the facility has over two hundred and fifty cameras in it, there's a lot of monitors that, that are required for that. These, these desks are, are expensive, they're, they're motorized, these individuals are assigned to these, these areas for, you know, a pretty lengthy period of time, they're kind of the one area that you're really not allowed to leave, someone always has to be operating jail control, so these desks are motorized, allow you to stand or adjust the heights to the individual user, so it's more comfortable. Then we move into appliances, we have some appliances for the staff break room that, that are included in this, as well as some inmate use appliances, I think there's a total of four microwaves in, for the day rooms for the inmate use, as well as, included in this is a, a one-time kind of commercial fridge that we have to purchase for eighteen hundred dollars. The commercial fridge is necessary, because when we move out of our current facility, we currently prep, we don't, we don't do any of the meal prep in our facility, they, they send in bulk containers of our meals, we plate them up, and then deliver them, but in the new facility, until the kitchen is built, we don't have the ability, ability to do that, and so the, our meal provider doesn't have the ability to, in the mornings, prep breakfast for us and get us over breakfast, so what they're gonna do is come up with a, a sack lunch breakfast, so it'll be like a pre-measured out cereal, you know, like a muffin or a breakfast bar, a milk, a juice, a piece of fruit, and it'll all be contained in a, in a sack lunch, and we have to store those overnight, 'cause those will get delivered with the evening meals, and staff will have to pull those. I think there's areas in the future that, you know, whether juvenile detention takes the fridge in the future, or, or detox, I think there's, there's ways to reuse some of that. Also included in there is some of the temporary laundry washers and dryers that we have to purchase for our temporary laundry facility. I know Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Wayland, you guys are aware of this, but we have a temp laundry, the main laundry facility won't be built until second phase, so we had to come up with a plan to how we're gonna do laundry, and we're using commercial, or not commercial, but residential-grade washers and dryers, I believe it's four of each in the facility, just to keep up with the, the volume of laundry we'll have, and I think maintenance has expressed some interest in, in taking at least one of the washer and dryers, if not more, I believe juvenile detention and detoxes also express some interest in taking those.
They'll get used.
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll get them used. Then we have some medical equipment totaling just under twenty-four thousand dollars, this is medical equipment that our medical provider recommends that we purchase as, as part of, you know, providing care to the inmates. Then there's just under four thousand dollars in window coverings, this price is likely gonna change, just due to the fact that, I got a quote from, from a vendor, but the window coverings don't get installed until around May of twenty nineteen, when second phase of the building is complete, so they weren't really able to lock us in a price, they just kinda said, here's a rough, you know, guess with installation and stuff. Then we have some meal, meal equipment that we need, this is trays, silverware, heated delivery carts, which we have to purchase as part of, of the, you know, the temporary meal situation that we have, not being that the kitchen's not completed, we'll have to have those trays plated at whoever's, you know, providing the meals, they'll come over in a heated cart, there's two of them actually, they're quite spendy, and those will come over to us, but we did find that if we're still cooking out of our new kitchen for both juvenile and detox, those carts will be needed anyways to deliver heated meals and make sure the meals are at temp to both those facilities, so. I, I have a line item here for signage, I don't have a number there, just 'cause we're still compiling a list, when I say signage, the facility, we kinda need to provide like vinyl lettering, we need to letter all, and number all the doors throughout the facility, so that staff know when they're calling master control what door they're referencing. Also, I think our lobbies and stuff need some vinyl lettering and stuff with, you know, directions on certain, certain areas. We still don't have that kind of list completed, 'cause we're still working on what areas we need to, to get signed, but then there's two items that were included in our twenty eighteen budget that were approved, the first being was a purchase of tasers for thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. Brian just recommended that I, I bring this to the, the board's attention and, and get approval to purchase that. And then uniforms for a total of six thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, that's for the additional staff that we'll have to hire for the operation of the new facility.
So we already approved the two?
Yes.
How many tasers does that have?
Thirty.
Thirty tasers?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, thank you. So, so the, the tasers was, that was an approved budget item in your normal jail operational budget?
Correct.
So you have funds there...
Yep.
For that?
Yeah.
It's, it's still, I still get you that it's an FFNE deal, but when we, when we, going to look at your full dollar amount for the FFNE budget, you had, you corrected it to be two hundred and ninety-five thousand, right?
Yep.
And that two hundred and ninety-five thousand, how, how, included thirty-seven thousand, that's already been budgeted in another source, from another source?
So our total, that, that's the budget of the two hundred and ninety-five thousand, that was the one percent that was recommended by construction engineers?
But so technically, the dollars needed for the two ninety-five, you could, technically you could, you could deduct the thirty-seven thousand from the two seventy-five, because you have those dollars from a different area that's already been approved.
And the fifty-four thousand?
And, and the, and the, yes.
And the six thousand?
And the six thousand.
For energy.
Yeah, and the six thousand. And just, just to get an idea on where, how we're doing, then my, my other question to you is, is this two hundred and ninety-five thousand, was this the budget for both phase one and phase two, or was it just, just for phase one?
Correct, it's for both.
Okay, so, so on all of these items that you're having here, you're, you're taking into consideration phase two...
Correct.
...needs as well?
Correct.
Okay, alright, okay, so I can, I'm just, seeing this, I see that we're well under, you know, especially when, you know, that two ninety-five and the two seventy-five, I know we can take forty off of that, for sure.
The two seventy-five does not include the, the two budgeted items.
Oh, it doesn't?
No.
Oh, okay, so the, so those items don't...
That's why I totaled them differently at the bottom.
I see, I see, okay.
So...
Okay, I thought they were included in the two, even, even with that.
I'm confused on that. I guess I was confused on that too.
Yeah, yeah.
So you take the two seventy-five...
The two seventy-five is everything else minus the two bottom budgeted items.
Right, but not minus the fifty-four thousand dollars that's already approved?
No, because the fifty-four thousand was intended to be used out of FFNE.
In the FFNE, okay.
Yes.
So we're still, we're still twenty thousand?
We're twenty thousand under budget, yep.
Totally good, yeah.
Great. Uh, Mr. Gross?
Just had in mind a question on, when you were talking about shelf and carts and storage, you said some were included in the original, what were they included in that? Where were they included in there?
There's certain areas...
Why, why wasn't everything included down there?
I'm not totally sure why, I, I think it was kind of an assumption by the architect to certain storage rooms to provide, it's really, I think, two storage rooms were provided, shelving, and I, I think it's more a built-in type shelving, and that's why it was provided. Basically, how they explained it to me is, kind of anything that, if we were to take a building and just flip it upside down, anything that would fall out should be covered under FFNE, and so the reason why they included two of the areas was because they were kind of built-ins, and they wouldn't have fallen out had they turned the building upside down, kinda thing.
We have a lot of freestanding shelving that we need to put into the new facility, for laundry and property, so, but, and that's, it's freestanding, it's not attached, like he said, so they didn't include that in construction costs.
Commissioner Campbell?
Justin, you've done, done good work on this, and good homework on this, my question for you is, I'm assuming that in a lot of these things, because of the quantities, we've probably gotten price breaks versus...
We did, specifically, we, our detention, there's actually quite a bit, it's not just the linens and bedding, mattresses, there's some other detention equipment, I, because of the costs, you know, under state law required to get quotes from, from at least one other vendor, or two vendors, I got quotes from, from a vendor we currently use, and another vendor that supplies almost a hundred percent identical items to them, their original advertised price, the, the one that we're recommending going with, was, I think, sixty-five thousand, their quote, and that, that didn't include shipping, their quote came in at thirty-three thousand with free shipping, so they knocked just over thirty thousand dollars off of their pricing for us.
The reason I asked that was, I had another tier of motive here, and it was gonna probably put a little bit of extra work to you, but I think you should contact Stephen over at the Regional Juvenile Center, obviously, there's gonna be the need for new materials over there as that process goes forward, and it would be nice to be able to tie in with the buying power.
And I have with the, in regards to the, the detention supplier, they also, the company that we use currently is Bob Barker Correctional Supplies, detention also uses them, the, the rep has been up, I, six times in the last year, and has met with both me and either Steve or James over at Juvenile Detention, and I've been working with them, letting them know where I've been getting quotes from, who I've seen as being the cheapest, and kinda working with them to say, hey, this is maybe who we should, should look at.
I guess my point is, is if Stephen can join in with you on buying some of the stuff... they're gonna take advantage of the large quantity purchases.
Yep.
Is he ready to purchase and...
Well, find out, because it might be worth his while to...
Because we'll need to start purchasing ours pretty quickly.
It's worthwhile to research it.
And I know they're willing to work, at least the Bob Barker Company and the other company I got quotes from, they're willing to work with them too, and I think they both want a chance to quote up the, the project for them as well. You know, we saw significant savings just in our mattress quoting them alone. They were originally priced at a hundred and forty dollars, they're now fifty-three dollars and some change apiece, so...
Okay.
They significantly dropped their price.
That's what I'd like to see Stephen be able to get that price too.
And I believe they will, and I'll work with them on that.
Alright, what is, what are the wishes of the board?
I move approval of the...
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Justin, for your work keeping this together. Alright, we'll move into our next item, a request of leave of absence for Lieutenant Lansum, Sheriff Berquist.
Morning.
Good morning. Sheriff?
I will. Well, we all know that Chief Deputy Matt Surro is retiring, his last day is the twenty-seventh of April, uh, which is, uh, we're gonna have to have a new deputy chief, which is gonna be hopefully Steve Lansum, if it works here today, that, and he would be doing it until the new sheriff gets elected.
Okay.
And I'm requesting a leave of absence from my current position as lieutenant to fulfill them duties.
Want to approve?
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Well, I, uh, I don't think it needs repeating that your high reputation precedes you, so I think you'll definitely serve this position well, so. Any other comments, questions from the board? And it's effective April twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Congratulations, Steve.
Our number four item, uh, we have Tim Dent and Mark Sloan, they request approval to fill a vacancy and hire systems administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a handout. In the Information Services, we have a database administrator position, and the person that filled that has left us. So, every time we have a position open, we always sit back and say, you know, are we, how are we, um, what kinda duties do we have to do, and we always make sure that whoever we hire is going to match those duties. And when we started looking at this one, what we found was the database administrator position had changed quite a bit over the years, what they did. And, uh, actually, a decade ago, we had two database administrators. What we looked at is what the type of duties that person was doing, and it appeared that the, that it fit much better into what we have as a systems administrator, and Technology Services has two systems administrators now. And we looked at the duties that those, that person was, or those people were doing, and we says, you know, we could make this work. So, the idea we have is to move the database administrator position from Information Services to Technology Services as a systems administrator, and then we're requesting permission to fill that position.
Well, thank you for the flow chart, for those of us that are not in the database world.
Yeah, this just shows that our two departments and how they're kinda configured with the proposal of what we're doing.
Well, and I think we really appreciate that your departments have such a great fluid relationship in terms of getting stuff done, that's quite, quite efficient. Any questions?
Want to approve?
We have a motion to approve with backfill and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And two, I think you heard the comment when we were talking in regards to computer services and internal service fund, that between those new, uh, new pieces at the jail, we wanna make sure that we're getting that budgeted for.
Yeah, not, not all the, uh, the purchases are gonna come out of internal services fund, most of them will. We've been holding off on a lot of their new computer replacement purchases until they move, but there's some additional equipment that will probably come out of the equipment over five hundred or something like that in the budget, but...
Well, but the original purchase price of them will come out of the jail project money, and that's the intent, that'll come out of the jail, that will, you won't have to take it out of your, that's, that will come out of, we have incorporated into the entire construction project, the new equipment, the new equipment. It's, it's what, it's how you then, for that new equipment, start the internal service portion that feeds it.
Right, and that's, that's when I come in during the budgeting process, I normally ask for, you know, a slight increase in...
So, do you do that, Tim, for all departments, all computers, so Julie wouldn't put it in hers then?
Correct.
Just make sure and remind us that's for the new...
He will.
Oh, well.
No, I just want, I just wanted to be fair, I mean, it's not... Alright, well, thank you. Alright, Ben, we have the annual department update from Extension, good morning.
Thanks for the time today. Good to see you. So, I'll just give some highlights on some of our programming that we have going on in the county, and I'll start with 4H. We're, uh, remaining consistent with our 4H clubs, we still have eleven community clubs, and there are three-hundred-and-twenty-eight youth that are in this, in those clubs. So, this is our, you know, our traditional 4H experience with their local meetings and the participation at the county fair. And all of these clubs, except one, we've seen an increase in membership over the past year too, so that's good to see that, that consistency and growth is still there. The fair participation by all of them has been great too. Last year at the county fair, we had two-hundred-and-eighty-five youth attend, and they had over four-hundred animal projects and almost fourteen-hundred non-animal projects. So, we continue to have a very large presence there and we appreciate that opportunity to, uh, to be there and to be out in front of the community in that way. And then of, of those youth that were at the fair, we had, um, around sixty that attended the state fair. And that's, uh, still consistent too, uh, with our, with our typical state fair participation. We, we've seen some growth, and this is a good highlight for us that we're happy about, some of the growth and changes that we're, we're developing in our projects, project clubs and our community programs. So, on the science side of things, we really use the Legos of all things to really introduce kids to, uh, aspects of science, and of course, they like that hands-on activity. One of our clubs has had the opportunity to go to the North Dakota State Championships, and they did while they were placing in a couple categories. Other things like shooting sports and wildlife and livestock knowledgeable and horse knowledgeable, those are staying consistent as well. And then on the community side, we are doing a lot more things with the minority populations in the county, um, especially here in Moorhead, of course. So, we've been establishing new partnerships with the New American Development, uh, New American Development Association and working with the smaller groups that are there and that population. We've also been partnering with Noreen Thomas at her farm, she's been having, working with us to have some youth come out there, and she's been showing them some agricultural practices too, so we appreciate her volunteer work with us. And then we've developed some, um, some homeschool groups, and that's, of course, giving us the chance to reach out to some additional youth in the county as well. And then other things with the schools and all their after-school programming there, that's, that's staying consistent across the county. One thing that's helped us, we've, our Center for Youth Development, our state 4H program, they've, uh, given us some funding to have a, a part-time STEM coordinator here, Rosie McCoslin Thompson, and we've appreciated her work, she's helped us, uh, do a lot of this additional outreach programming in the county. Some of the highlights for Randy Nelson, he's our horticulture and agriculture educator in the county, and so he still has his two trial projects going on. The one in Holly is, is grape trial project, and that's, he's on his third year, that's a five-year project. So, that's continuing to go well, looking at yields and pest tolerance. And then his other major project is, um, his rose trials, um, in Dilworth. And, um, that's, that's been going really well, he's been recognized and receiving awards at conferences for his work in that, and he's been getting published in, um, some national research publications as well.
I just wanna piggyback off that, he did have quite a high award from Texas A&amp;M in regards to that, so that's something that is nationally acclaimed that's going on in Clay County, so that's great.
Yeah, and then been invited to speak at a couple of conferences as well, so, um, he's representing us very well within the county and state extension. Our, our master gardeners are doing great work and we're happy to help out with the county's projects here on the county campus. They've been talking with, with Joe on some landscaping projects for the, the new law enforcement center and the correctional facility, and then they'll continue to keep doing their work around the courthouse as well. They also still have their downtown, downtown Moorhead Gardens by Shields too. And then on the agriculture side, Randy's involved with all of our, our county crops updates that we do, so he partners with Phil Gagoza and our regional office on those and other folks from NDSU Extension to hold those. We had that in Moorhead, we had good attendance there, around sixty-three people came, and then, um, he's also assisting with the private pesticide applicator training, we did that in Comstock again, and that was attended by around forty people. So, Randy's a great resource because he is just kind of the Q and A guy, so he gets all these inquiries from, uh, people coming into the office or requests to come out to their yards or their farms, um, and this is a large part of his job as well. So, some information on that, around ninety percent of his questions are horticulture-related and ten percent agriculture. The things related to agriculture are commonly about land rent and then crop production. And this is kinda interesting, and I guess it's a reflection of the, the growth of kind of the local foods and small farm movement, but a lot of his crop production questions are, um, related to organics and, and those farmers. Um, and so for his site visits, um, he goes on dozens of those a year as well, and those are all, always related to, um, most commonly trees, but also he takes lawn questions and of course, garden questions as well. And he just recently started, uh, for this year, as, as we're getting into spring and the, kind of the gardening season, he's, he's back on the radio on KFGO every week, talking about a topic with, with them, and I think he takes some, uh, phone calls as well from listeners. And then our other major aspect of, of programming in the, in the county, as you know, is our, is our nutrition program, programming from Rosie Gonzalez, and she coordinates our SNAP education here in the county. So, uh, with her outreach, um, and programming, she's, um, hit about four-hundred-and-fifty individuals, and these are ranging from youth to senior citizens, um, and all sorts of demographic backgrounds as well. So, her, she's reaching out to Hispanic people, um, Native Americans, African Americans, and, and all others as well. With all our programming, we focus a lot on partnerships, and Rosie's really good with this as well. So, uh, organizations in the community that she, uh, coprograms with include the Cultural Diversity Resources, the Lost and Found Recovery Center, uh, the New American Development Center, the Red River Recovery Center, our juvenile center here, um, special education cooperatives, um, the school district and other, and other rehab centers as well. So, um, these are, you know, ways that we can establish good partnerships and connect with people that are part of the SNAP program and help them out. She also does a lot with, uh, community gardens, and there's a lot of those popping up in, in the county as well, uh, so she's involved with all of those. And then, um, she also helps with starting food shelves and getting programming going on there and connecting with the people that use those resources. So, I wanna kinda highlight a couple other statewide extension programs that we've had benefit here, benefit over the county. We run a clean energy resource team, we call it, CERTS is the acronym, and, um, they have some local coordinators across the, in our region, and they've assisted with two projects. Uh, one was in Barnesville that recently received, uh, five thousand dollars from the CERTS program, and this was to help them develop their community solar garden that they're working on right there. And then the other one that they recently funded was for three thousand dollars, Moorhead Public Service is working on a geothermal project downtown, and, uh, we contributed funding to that as well. Uh, so, I'm always happy when I see that these resources are coming into the county and we're making those connections too. Similar to CERTS is our Regional Sustainable Development Partnership, and, um, folks in the county should know that that's another resource that's available where you can give out funding to the, the types of projects that we program with. So, the partnerships provide small grants similar to these energy ones, um, in the, in the range of a few thousand dollars that can support local tourism, um, small farms, community economic development, and other similar projects that communities might have going on. And then the, uh, the last program thing I'll mention is our Emerging Leadership Program. This is where we have couples from the county go through this training that we provide, it's a year-long program, and Jared and Amy Johnson from Glendon are the couple this year. That program is actually wrapping up this weekend, um, where they're having a banquet in Kirkston on the campus there. But this provides training to these folks, and then they, uh, in turn, go back and use it in all the different organizations that they're involved with at, in their communities. The last thing I'll mention is, um, just on our, our partnership with the county, um, we are at the end of our, our current contract that we have, and so the, the Extension Committee at the Association of Minnesota Counties, they, um, at their recent meeting, they, um, agreed to and supported our, our new contract going forward with all the counties in the state, and, um, for the next three years, so twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-one. And, um, like we usually try to do, these are kinda similar to the, the, what might be the typical cost of living adjustments that counties see. So, in twenty nineteen, what we're proposing is a two-point-two percent increase, and then in twenty twenty and twenty-one will be two percent each. So, as we work with you on the, the budget process, um, this summer, start working on that, we'll share more information on that with you as well.
And from our region, those representatives on that Extension Committee, I think are Barry Nelson from Becker and Stephanie Mirnalski from Waukegan.
Waukegan, yep.
Uh, can you say too who those recipient awards were for the, the farm family, is that?
They haven't accepted yet, so I...
Alright, so when they do, we'll...
I shouldn't, yes.
We'll, uh, thank them for those as well.
Yep, so we recently worked to, to select our recognitions, the Clay County Farm Family of the Year, and we have the opportunity to participate in the NDSU Harvest Bowl recognition, and then we also select a farmer and, and homemaker from the county as well for their work.
When they do, we'll thank them for that.
Exactly.
Ben, you are doing great work in the county, but I think, uh, what sometimes goes unnoticed is the, the value of having the regional office in Moorhead, specifically when it, when it comes to the ag pieces and the, uh, the, um, continuing leadership or continuing education programs and seminars that you have. Oftentimes, when you look and it's only available in around Kirkston, it's, you have to travel, so it is great when it's in Moorhead, so I, I really appreciate that, that, that service is there.
Thank you. So, yeah, we have around eighteen staff in our regional office here, and, yeah, we do, they're doing programming across the region, of course, but we try to do focuses in the population centers too.
Any questions?
No questions, just to comment, it's just amazing, when you listen to your report, you know, the number of people that you involved in that thing, you know, when you look at the 4H program, you know? I mean, all the, the good things that are happening in county, you know, it's just, uh, you look at the jail, you know, Correctional Center, yeah, we're working with a lot of people there too, but in a different, in a different area, you know, but when you look at the good things that are happening here in this county, 4H people, look at what Randy Nelson is doing, I mean, you see him publish weekly in the paper and you hear him on the, on the radio, there's just so much contact that you guys are doing with the, with the citizens or residents of Clay County, and I really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Brian?
Madam Chair, a couple things. One, I don't know that there's any county fees, but we normally talk about fees during this Phase Two. And secondly, um, I'll just echo what Commissioner Gross said, and Commissioner Mojo reminded me of that very fact, of the positive things that 4H and, and Extension does during the movement of offices and things over in your building, and that's the last thing I wanna say, is that Ben was super to work with in rearranging, uh, the positions, the, the office space over at the Family Service Center. They leapfrogged over their county office into the old state auditor space, which really helped us out in making room for that, and they wouldn't have had to do that, and they, they, he just was very obliging to do that, so I want that noted.
We got a bigger conference room, so it was great for all of us.
Well, good. Everybody wins.
No, we're happy to always cooperate with the county and we appreciate Brian and Georgia and Joe's help with our move and getting that all set up. It was good.
Well, I don't think it, I mean, Kevin and I can say that the impact that your programs have on myself and Kevin's kids are phenomenal. And I do think to have a program that can really facilitate some healthy development, but also as you're branching out to some populations, you're experiencing some difficulty as well. I think it's just a very well-rounded program and money well-spent, so.
Thanks. Yeah, I forget that statistic we just shared at the Extension Committee. But we know there's tons of research that shows that this sort of funding upfront saves local governments and all governments money in the end.
Yep.
We're happy to do that.
Anything else?
Years ago, when funding was, became difficult in the public school systems and the after-school programmings went away, it was 4-H that really stepped up. And I just commend that, you know, your group for that.
Thank you.
I know now there's more things going on in the public school system again now. But for a while, there, some of the after-school stuff was strictly taken over by 4-H. I like to, I've always said I like to see each year the number of kids involved with 4-H go up. And I really appreciate that that's always a goal for your group to do.
Yeah, thank you, absolutely. And it definitely is, I mean, all these kind of extra non-traditional 4-H efforts, those are considered 4-H kids in our counties. So it's definitely increasing, especially with all these new partnerships we're establishing in our communities.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, one heck of a fruit sale, wasn't it?
We did.
And I hope I can get rid of all that fruit in my house.
Well, next year, if you want to deliver it, I spent most of Thursday and majority of Friday delivering fruit, so I'll tap you for that.
So you either, you're either overbought or underrated.
We've got more in the county office if you want to say.
Thank you.
Yeah, they set another record this year with that fundraising project.
Sixty thousand dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we have Joe and Georgia for their annual departmental update. Good morning.
Good morning.
Brian kind of stole my piece. We had that extension meeting last week and I was going to thank you for your willingness to help them with that relocate. And I think it went really well.
Yeah. Sorry.
No, that's all right. I was going to say.
Yeah, yeah, we're done then, right? Well, I'll start first. I'll kind of touch on a little bit of our staffing, what we have on staff now. Because we, it seems like we didn't have a turnover for many, many years. And then we have three people, we have two people that have left us in this last year. And one to retirement, another one took a position in another place. And then Rex Lusti will be retiring, and he hasn't given me an exact date, but he thinks in August. So we have three people that have, will, or have been retired in the last year. So, and then we hired on Tom Millet and Isaac Dent. And both of those two have stepped up into the roles and are learning what needs to be done. So right now, we've got a total of six full-timers, including myself. And then we have one nighttime roster on staff that kind of helps kind of the cleanup at night and stuff. So some of the projects that we did, we worked with the Buildings Committee and met, I think we met a couple of times this year and went over projects for the year. And I really appreciate that process, them helping us kind of sort through what goes every year. And some of the stuff we did, the second-floor courthouse project, carpet and paint, just recently did that. Added a new sprinkler system in the courthouse and the irrigation system there. Painted a lot of rails and kind of exterior stuff. Seems like that was kind of due. And we have another whole list, I think, this summer that we're going to hit up. So Service Center honey we painted looks real good. So other than that, worked with a lot of projects with Georgia and her building with some remodeling. And as far as the jail, we, it kind of seemed like we always got a to-do list going on there. So major project there is a boiler project happening, starting sometime end of April into May. At the same time, they'll be adding all the equipment needed to hook up to the jail as far as the heating. So it's kind of two major projects happening at once there, but good time to do them both at the same time. So other lastly, well, I've been working with the master gardeners, like we just brought up Randy Nelson. He's been great to work with. And master gardeners, they, they've been, I just really appreciate their help. They really know their stuff. I like a plant. They tell me it doesn't go there and I believe them. So, because it doesn't grow or whatever. So I really appreciate and utilize them a lot. And I'm grateful to have them to help us out. So as far as the actual campus, it's turning into, we're feeling, I know it's, 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 used to be kind of a three, four buildings on one block or two. Now it's turned into more of a campus-style feel for us. So I, we're really looking at different ways of doing things differently now. Mowing is a good example. We used to have wide open areas. Now we have more, you know, nooks and little boulevards and stuff. So the way we do some maintenance around here is changing, so we're taking a look at how we do things and hopefully do it a little bit more efficiently. So lastly, I was just going to put a plug in for my maintenance guys. They've been really busy this last year. And I watched them take on projects and then still do the day-to-day stuff. And I just really appreciate their help. And I'm impressed on some of the projects they've been able to jump in and do. So other than that, that's really all I have. So questions for me, or?
Questions? I know I say this to you, but your staff really does a phenomenal job. I mean, it is so much a relief to pull up and not have an eyesore. I mean, it really is today, walking out there, good night, or spreading salt so nobody slips. And summers, the gardens look great, so thank you.
Appreciate that.
Georgia?
Okay, for the Family Service Center, our customer base are the tenants, the employees, the public. Our goal is to provide a safe, clean, and friendly customer service environment. Part of the building manager, we oversee the mailroom, which has two part-time staff. They actually job-share, so equivalent to one full-time. Again, that's another area that's changed. We don't do nearly the copying that we used to do due to paper reduction. So we do have a contract with Social Services that that staff job shares with Social Services. And then we generate income for the payment to that staff when they work in Social Services for four hours a day. But the staff duties in there are operating the mail machine, doing the copying, mailing, faxing, and then issuing of the keys. And some of the scheduling for the fleet vehicles and meeting rooms actually gets performed out of that area, too. For, as far as the items that I work on with, work closely with Joe, and I appreciate Joe and his staff, too. I'm sure there's days I probably drive them crazy because I keep making a list for them. But maintenance of the lease agreements, coordinating the repairs, building updates, keys and future projects. We do our paint and carpet in the building unless there's an actual remodel project. We try and keep it on a ten-year schedule and we try and coordinate that with either in-house staff or contracting, depending on the size of the project. Right now, the building's a hundred percent occupied. We did have some moving around, as you know, with the regional extension. And with that rearranging, we were able to accommodate all space and relocate, except for the state auditor staff, relocated outside of the building. But otherwise, we were able to downsize agencies and still remain in the building. Our current rental rate is thirteen twenty-five a square foot for the first floor and twelve twenty-five for the second through fifth floor. Rental rate includes all the utilities, parking, use of the meeting rooms, and custodial services. Phone and internet are the two additional expenses that a non-county tenant would have to provide. Some of our custodial staff, we did do a little changing with that, too. We only have three full-time custodial staff. At one point, we had six full-timers in the Family Service Center. And we had three full-timers at the courthouse and Law Enforcement Center. Now we have three full-timers, three part-time, and twelve variable hour. It does seem to work out well. The majority of our staff that aren't full-time do have full-time jobs at other locations. On occasion, that can cause us some scheduling issues because they aren't able to adjust their schedule too much due to their other employment. But overall, it has worked out well. The custodial staff provides cleaning for all of the campus area buildings here in addition to the motor vehicle. We obtain custodial supply quotes, not annually, but as needed. Or right now, we're looking at additional supplies for the Law Enforcement Center and Jail, so we're in the process of working on that. We did not budget at this point because we weren't sure what our needs are for additional equipment as far as possibly floor scrubbers. Most of the equipment that we currently have at the Law Enforcement Center and Jail will go to other locations. But we do know there might be a need for some larger equipment. The county fleet is also under the building manager, again, with Joe's help and his staff, for helping with cleaning and scheduling the repairs and maintenance of the vehicles. They don't do that, but they do transport them for the local service. Some of the vehicles are leased and some are still county-owned. As far as our rental rates, I went over that. The maintenance fee, and this would fall under Joe's department, but actually do the invoicing for it. We had a twenty-five-dollar-hour maintenance fee, and that fee is only issued when it's additional. Sometimes we'll have a tenant that wants their county furniture, or, excuse me, their office furniture put together. And it can take two, three days, or they want to relocate offices. And we found that, two things, once we implemented the fee, they kind of looked at whether it really needed to be done. And the other thing is, it does help generate, because it does take a lot of Joe's staff time to provide that service. Our copy rate is seven cents. Our postage rate is seven percent of the total postage. And those rates are regulated not necessarily as a revenue, but to cover the cost of the equipment and the staff to operate those. The bus storage for at the Norshet, where Solid Waste has their building, we do still lease space for buses, and that's two fifty a month per bus. And both the rental rate and the bus rate, I do review those annually to see what the market is and to see how comparable we are. We have a twenty-dollar lost key and card fee. It doesn't sound like it's a whole lot, but again, people are quick to, oh, I lost my card and just get another one. And so we did implement that to, again, cover the expense of the cards in the program.
So just to piggyback off what we're asking most departments, you feel like your fees are adequate?
I think so, especially the rental rate. We do compare with that. I think you might see a lower rental rate, but in addition to the lower rental rate, they do charge for utilities. Parking, cleaning is over and above that, so.
Any other comments? Well, thank you. Thank you for your work.
How much of adjustment are you going to have to make for the new facility? Are you, you going to have to hire more people, or is that all figured in our budgets already, or?
I think as far as custodial staff, we probably will have to hire some additional staff, whether it'll be variable hour or full-time or part-time. I'm not sure yet. Right now, we currently have at the Law Enforcement Center alone, we have one full-timer, but doesn't clean full-time at the jail, a permanent part-time, and then a variable hour. Again, those are early morning hours, so those hours are sometimes harder to attract a person that doesn't have another full-time job. And yet it's not enough to live off of. So we may have to increase some hours, but at this point, we haven't, we're going to see what we can do with our current staff.
And as far as the maintenance, we, we're kind of taking the approach of there are two new buildings. And hopefully, it's more of a preventative maintenance type stuff we do rather. And we're hoping that by redoing things campus-style type, that we'll be able to do things more efficiently. So I think on our end is we're going to see how it goes for a year or two. And hopefully, we can, I believe with the crew we have, we can maintain what we have for now, so.
I just wanted to sentence the sheriff, too. I don't know, we got that ability to utilize those people. Do we utilize those people at all?
Yeah, we, in fact, they helped us move with probation a little bit here and there. Yeah, we do help, we do, they do help us. Definitely have to get in and have them scheduled because they, they're pretty busy in the summer, so. But they're willing, when we call, they come, so, yeah. I think before I'd consider, you know, asking for something new, I would utilize them a little bit more, too.
Commissioner Campbell?
Joe, it was like music to my ears what you just said there. The fact that you're willing to, you know, take the time and see what you, what you can do with your current staffing is, that's an amazing thing for you to say and to try to do.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just, I just want to thank you for that. And Georgia, too, from your side, the same thing. It's, thank you very much.
It doesn't go unnoticed. Any other comments? Yeah, Brian?
Yes, I have to make a comment, Madam Chair. Those two people sitting in front of you, what a pair to draw, too, I'll tell you. They are just fantastic to work with, and I know I can say that about every department head. But these two are really something special. They really step up and work with every project and all of the things that we've had been going on here. And the messes that have been made around on the sidewalks and the change in signing and the cleaning and the moving of office space. Everybody, and Lori has given me permission to use this word, they just do amazing work, so. It's really, and they're really fun to work with. And just that enthusiasm and willingness, I mean, you just can't find two better people to work with than any, I know you know that, but there's something.
With that, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into our next item, which is a request for approval of the resolution and submittal of a grant application for Minnesota Green Corps. Gina Nolte. Kathy will come up as well. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. We are applying for a Minnesota Green Corps member. And the Minnesota Green Corps member is an offshoot of AmeriCorps Vista, which is the, a federal program that is the state side of the Peace Corps. And we've had Minnesota Green Corps in a number of departments in this, in the county. And I think they've done all a great job. And I've been fortunate to have had a Green Corps member for three years. We did not have one this last year. Now they're kind of getting a limit of three years because they want to share the opportunities. And so, but we're going to give another try this year. And then we've, in the past, we've had one for the RAP program that started with the jail. And I think that was very helpful in getting that going. So with that, I'm just, I'm just, we just need a resolution signed that there's approval to apply for the Minnesota Green Corps member. There are no costs to the county. If there, we sometimes pay for the mileage and things like that, and we put that in our Partnership for Health grants. And I also wanted to show something here. Austin Hoff was our last grant, or Minnesota Green Corps member. He was here for two years. That's the most you can work one place, and he was just fabulous. And he did get an award. No, I have a taped-on version of this because we sent with him the original as a going-away present. But they did original art. This was two, twenty-seventeen Educator of the Year Partnership for Health in Austin Hoff, presented by Bicycle Alliance of Minnesota. It had original art, looked much better than this, but I think, if you want to just take a look at that. So, and I think we've, they've, they've been recognized in many ways throughout the state, so. So in this year, we would be asking for them to continue to work on active transportation. They work closely with Metric hog Bike Pedestrian Committee, working with walkable communities, bike rodeos, education on bike riding, so that we can be safer out there. And also may work with the city on Green Corps as they move to, or not, on green steps as they become a green-step city.
Okay, great.
I'll move the resolution.
I have a motion to approve the resolution in a second. That was my question in regards to if there would be a collaboration with Metric hog or not, so. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thanks, too, for the time it takes to write those grants. I know that they're not often quick. That's why you're not asking me to write them.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. We'll move into our committee reports. Commissioner Campbell?
On March fourteenth, we had our Prairie Lakes Solid Waste meeting. They are, they do have the one area shut down now where they're doing the major repair and replacement to the burner system there. We got a, after the meeting, we got a tour of what was going on there. And they think that when this is all said and done, it's going to be a really good fix. And it looks like it's going to generate about an additional five thousand pounds of steam. So it's, that's a good thing that's going on there. So there's really something that's looking up there. So there's really something that's looking up there. Then we had the Greater Fargo Ward Economic Development Corporation meeting. Oh, and by the way, we did get to meet the new person who took over from Mike Hannan, Otter Tail County Solid Waste Director. We got to meet him. Then we had the Greater Fargo Ward Economic Development Board meeting. We went through several items. We got an update on the Executive Search Committee, and a report on the emerging, another report on the emerging Prairie update, and that is, that is quite a nationwide recognition going on in that. It's really doing really, really well. And Commissioner Whelan will probably add some more to that. He serves on the advisory board. Then we did have the, Friday, we did have the special meeting of the Flood Diversion Authority, of which we, we did review with the technical advisory group, the Plan B. I think it's probably like Plan 847B myself, but it's Plan B. But anyway, we had a good discussion there, and, you know, obviously with these changes, and it certainly, it certainly reduces some impacts in Clay County, which is really good, but it also doesn't come without some, some issues for, for our, in the metro area, I asked a question, and we could, we could be looking at the potential of another 35 to 70 homes having to be bought out right in the Moorhead area. You know, so there, you know, some of those changes, there are other, creates other impacts, and we'll do our best to work through those. And, and so we did then vote unanimously to move forward with a new permit application with the DNR, and that was submitted later that day. On yesterday, we, most of us were able to attend the Township Officers' Meeting in the morning. There was a lot of good updates, and I do want to thank all of our county department heads who were able to be there and give updates to the Township Officers. I think they really appreciate that. And we also did have our advisory people from the diversion project give a, give a report there, and I think that was well received. I think they were glad to hear about the update, and they had a lot of questions. It was, it turned out really good. In the afternoon, we had our semi-monthly construction update on the two projects, two projects, and again, I don't have a whole lot to report. I know there's been a, we saw this time, a couple more things show up on, that are coming out of contingency, that we wait to get a little bit more information on as to why, why they're happening, and we'll be monitoring, monitoring that. We report all the time, it's just moving in the right direction.
Is that contingency fund still in good shape?
Yes. I think Commissioner Gross, the, you know, in the, excuse me here. On the, on the jail side, we are looking at what was 800, I think originally, an 850,000 contingency. On the contractors, that, that number still available is over 500,000, so, and you know, so we're quite a way into the project. And then on the, on the LEC, the owner contingency, we start off with 250, and we still have 236,000.
What, what happens to that contingency fund when we get done? Is it, we get it back, or?
Yeah, it comes to me. Comes to the department.
I'm glad it's going to a good cost.
No, what, what hap, what happens when that's all said and done, it's just, it's just money that we can go for, to, you know, pay the building.
Yeah.
That concludes my report.
Commissioner Haynes?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On Thursday, March 15th, I attended the MetreCog meeting, and we approved the mat bus item. And also later that day, I attended the full board meeting for the Lake Agassiz Regional Library System, and we received an audit report from Aid Bailey, who had done the audit for them for many years, and they received a satisfactory, excellent rating. And then we just heard various reports from the different members of the board. And yesterday, I also attended the Clay County Township Officers' Annual Meeting in Dilworth, along with the other commissioners, and that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
Last Tuesday, I attended Hagan Township, their annual meeting, and they asked me to be there to talk about the government-owned land and the Nottingham's Nature Conservatory, you know, so talked about that for a while. I gave them an update on the jail, and they had a good attendance for their annual meeting. And there, I went over the morgue and township, and again, spoke on, just jail update and stuff like that. Good meeting there, too. It's surprising they ask you to go to these township meetings, you know, and the annual meeting, they have a good turnout, but it's, it's good to see that people are interested in their, what's going, happening locally, so it's good to give them an update of what's happening here. Wednesday, I went to the Wild Rice Watershed Board, the Soil and Water Conservation District, Kevin Kasselberg and Gabe were up there talking about buffers and trying to get some, getting the Wild Rice Watershed Board involved in doing some contracts for the buffers. At this time, Wild Rice Watershed Board, I don't know if they'll participate in, but it sounded, I sort of got the feeling that they weren't quite interested in it, they wanted more of a structural thing brought to them, but I got a feeling that's, I don't know, I just got the feeling they weren't quite interested in getting involved in it.
Are they waiting to see what legislation does anyway?
I don't, I don't know what they're waiting on, you know, it's just, I mean, the Soil and Water Conservation talked about, you know, being $300 an acre available to them, but of course, that money isn't there yet, but I think they're, probably are doing a wait-and-see attitude, you know, but, and then again, yesterday, I also want to thank their staff for being there. I think that really adds to the, to their program, to show their interest, that our staff is interested in helping them out, and showing them what, what they are doing, and it was good to see them there, and it was, it was a good meeting at the Dilworth Community Center for the Township Meeting. Those are my meetings. Thank you.
Commissioner Whelan?
Let's see, I had Prairie Lakes Solid Waste, Commissioner Campbell already reported on that, and Economic Development Corporation meeting, Kevin reported on that also, but we, it was Jim Burton, the president's last meeting, and so he's, he's done a great, he did a great job over the years he was there, and the process is moving along to, for his replacement. The interim president, whose name is Paul Lucy, was there and, and spoke, and he, he was, for the last number of years, he's been responsible for economic development for the state of North Dakota, so I think he'll be a great interim president. Let's see, I was in St. Paul on Friday for the Association of Minnesota Counties Board of Directors meeting, and had various reports and updates at that meeting. Lot of discussion on, on legislative issues that are going on, a lot of discussion on one bill that's in, the one that requires people to work for medical assistance, and AMC does not oppose that bill, but they do have a lot of concerns about the cost will be to counties, you know, depending on how it's presented, so a lot of good discussion on that, and there'll probably be more information coming forward. And then yesterday, I was in Menomonee for the Area Agency on Aging Land of the Dancing Sky, and staff update and reports there. It's always interesting, the senior linkage line, that, you know, this comprised, 22 counties comprise this, this group, and just incredible how many, how much service they provide to senior citizens, but also the senior linkage line, the amount of things they do, and they, they, they always have each person who works the, the phone lines give update, or give stories on incidents that they've dealt with, and a lot of interesting things that they do, and just incredible help that they provide seniors in our multi-county area, so that was it for me.
All right, thank you. Last week, I extended, attended the extension meeting, I think that was pretty well covered with Ben's report. I then had the Cass Clay Food Systems Commission, we had a presentation from Nancy Carview, from the Glean ND Project, that also carries into the Moorhead areas, or Clay County area as well, and then had an update on kind of the federal funding and reauthorization, reauthorization of the farm bill. One thing of note, the new joint powers agreement for that, it's been, the name was changed, they added a, a food action network, because Clay County and the City of Fargo are the public health hosts, that will be coming to us soon to approve, but it's basically just a continuation of what we approved in, in 2014. I met with a constituent in regards, a couple of constituents in regards to some highway concerns, a continuation of discussion that we'd have at this board, and then yesterday, I attended the Township Officers' Meeting. It's always a good opportunity for us to hear from them, what their issues are, and, and kind of use that going forward. And then after, I had a, with a planning commission permit applicant, whose permit is being appealed, so that will come to us shortly. I do want to note, the annual Greater Fargo Ward EDC meeting is on April 24th at 11:30, so Colleen, if you could get that on our schedule, advertise that. And then also make sure that the agenda for the morning accommodates for commissioners.
And I think we have the RSVP to go to that.
Right, so let Colleen know if you're.
I want to go.
That concludes my reports. Brian, if you have.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Let me hand this out first, this little follow-up. The school would appreciate a, kind of a letter, and if you want to do one, we're on kind of a tight schedule for it, so if you would like to do one, we can certainly put one together for you, we can use, I think we've got, hopefully a photo that we could use, and we could put that together, and, and it's for their, well, I guess you can see what it's for. It's in regards to their new school, in addition, just congratulating them, so if you'd like to do something like that, please let us know, and if you let me know today, we can throw something together, or you can send something to me, and we can get, put it together and get it over to them quite quickly, so.
I think the general consensus is that's a good thing. I just want to make sure we follow suit, and if all of, whenever there's been a, a new school in Clay County, that we've done the same thing.
And I don't know if you have or not. The examples just show the elected leadership, and that's what I clarified with them, she'd like something from the elected leadership, so whether you want to do a board one, whether you want to do individual ones, might be something you want to think about, but we don't have a lot of time. She didn't give me an exact deadline, except yesterday, so.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
I think from the whole board?
Yeah, I think you can just, at the bottom, list all of our names.
Okay, we'll do something like that, then.
Yeah.
Frank, all right.
Then we'll use a group picture, too, if that's okay.
We don't need a picture.
Excuse me?
A group picture?
Well, your, your board.
One that's on your website.
Well, you don't have to.
Yeah, I'll put a picture on there.
Put a picture.
The example have pictures on it, I guess, just to think of following that.
It's a good picture if you've got it, use it.
Let's talk about the school.
Okay, okay, thank you, appreciate that. I think you heard maybe on the news last night or today, this morning, about there's been some attempt again to try to get some additional monies from the state legislature to clean up that DMV thing, and that's not going very well. That got voted down yesterday, another few million dollars that the governor was asking for, so I guess I'm not sure how they're going to fix that.
Did you get my email this morning?
I haven't seen your email, no.
I thought there was something that the House approved one, the Senate approved one, but they were separate.
Yeah, yes, one got voted down that the governor had asked for, and then the House voted down another one, 100, and, I mean, it was just a real shutdown. But the Senate has voted on something, so now they have to go to conference, so, but then the comment was a follow-up, that they didn't feel that the citizenry should pay for something that they've screwed up, but unfortunately, that's what's going to happen.
They are going to pay.
That's exactly right, yeah. That's exactly right, so. Had a meeting with, with Dave Overbow, scheduled a meeting with me to visit Little Millor about the five-year plan and, and some of the reorganization in regards to the diversion things, and I think he touched base with, with a couple of you in regards to that, too. The, met with, with Georgia and Joe in regards to the Family Service Center building. They get requests every once in a while, and then, of course, every time there's another, you know, public event, shooting, or bombing, or something like that, they, they hear from their tenants of, of new security measures, so we've gone over some of those things, but just to let you know that we do continually work on those and talk about them. So, we had a central administrative managers meeting and go over the various things that are going on in the county with them. Darren and I, or maybe it was just Darren and I, I guess, but I met with Kathy as well in regards to a discussion reference, trying to attract nurses and how we can make the positions more attractive, and, and, you know, do we look at a scholarship plan, do we look at sign-on bonus, how do we, how do we attract that? So we're going to push for some, something to, to try to, to attract some nurses to come on board, so we'll, we'll keep you informed of, of what's going on there. I attended that diversion meeting last Friday, I attended the township meeting yesterday, the construction meeting yesterday afternoon, and what some of the changes, one of the bigger changes that are coming forward right now, in the process, is the fact that the, there were, the second level of the correctional facility did not have, I'll say, secure screening within the air duct system of it, and the lower level headed on the plans, and the architect assumed that that would flow through the second building, and of course, the contractor did not bid that in the, in the second level. It's about a $8,000 fix, but again, our concern and what the county raised yesterday was, what would have the cost been to bid it originally? And if it's the same, you know, if they're in there to put in 25 of those air ducts, and they have to add another 20 of them, it's just the cost of adding them, it's not an additional cost to the project, and that's what we have to be concerned with. So, it's some additional monies, I mean, it's, it's just little things like that that are missed sometimes, it's a big cost, but it's a big building, and every detail can't be fine-hearted out, so that's, that's one of the major ones that we talked about yesterday, and like I said, we clarified of, of the responsibility there. Yesterday, late yesterday afternoon, Diane Streifel, your county recorder, asked to meet with me late in the afternoon, and she submitted her letter of retirement, so she will be retiring in June, so we will talk through that, if you have some ideas on it. Remember, you know, we, we, you approved the, kind of the initial step of the land management office, some of the department heads have some real good thought process on, and, and here's an opportunity again now for, for some streamlining, and we'll need to talk through that a little bit, and, and see what is the best way to go there. It's been some very favorable responses from at least the staff, the heads, the department heads of how that's working down there, so maybe we can do something there and look Oh, I did spend just a little time on, on an interview, you saw in the paper, and I did include, the reason, one of the reasons why I've stuck around this long is such a fantastic board to work with, and, and I really truly do mean that, so.
Make sure and make it hard the last couple of months, then. Make sure and make it hard the last couple of months, then.
That wasn't noted in the paper, though, wasn't it? About the fantastic board.
No, it wasn't.
No, okay.
That's why I'm noting it now. They missed that. They don't get every comment you make, so. For some reason, they were trying to make it about me. I don't know why, but, but no, you guys have been just fantastic to work, work with, and we'll, we'll work out some actually dates, and then I'll get you a letter soon, so. That's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Ryan, yesterday at our jail meeting, there was the discussion about the plans and preps for the juvenile center, and I'd raised a question about asbestos.
Oh, yeah.
Looking for, and I, I just ask if you would make sure we follow up on that, so we don't get into any delay issues with that.
Oh, absolutely. In fact, you know, again, before, I think Joe was, was texting before he got back to his office, walking over there. He was trying to line up the, the inspection and things, and, and we, we discussed that a little bit more, and we want to make sure that the architect is on board, that they didn't review it, and in their professional opinion feel it wasn't needed. It's just one more step. So, yeah, absolutely, we'll get that taken care of.
We never heard, every building seemed to have something.
That's right.
So I don't, I just didn't want us to get to that, too. Oh, boy, now we got to wait six weeks.
Yeah, no, no, that, yeah, we're addressing that.
Right, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. We hadn't, we hadn't addressed that, so appreciate that.
Anything else? Nope, if not, we are adjourned.